Good afternoon. We'll now call the regular Salina City Commission meeting to order and request a roll call.
Mayor Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hay?
Here.
Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
All who can stand, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We will move to awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, the week of February 17th through 23rd, 2019, as Engineers Week in the city of Salina, Jeff Dries, President of the Smoky Valley Chapter of Kansas Society of Professional Engineers, will read the proclamation.
Hello. Thank you for allowing the time for this proclamation. Again, my name is Jeff Dries, and KSP, Kansas Society of Professional Engineers, is a group that promotes awareness and recognition of the value of the meaning of the professional engineering license. And so with that, I will start with the proclamation. Whereas George Washington, the first President of the United States and founding father of our nation, was a distinguished military and agricultural engineer, as well as an excellent surveyor, and whereas engineers have used their scientific knowledge and technical skills in creative and innovative ways to improve the quality of life and fulfill society's needs, and whereas engineers are encouraging our young math and science students to realize the practical power of their knowledge by sponsoring programs such as Future City Competition and Math Counts, and engineers adhere to a strong code of ethics and standards of conduct promoting personal accountability, ethical decision-making, and quality work such that citizens will look to engineers for their knowledge and skills to meet the challenges of the future, and whereas this year's theme for the event is Engineers Invent Amazing. And it is appropriate to recognize engineers' countless accomplishments and contributions during the week we celebrate George Washington's birthday. And now I, Trent W. Davis, M.D., Mayor of the city of Salina, Kansas, do hereby proclaim this week of February 17th through February 23rd, 2019, as Engineers Week in the city of Salina, and call this observation to the attention of our citizens for the contributions to our health, safety, and welfare by engineers in our community and beyond. In witness thereof, I have here on to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed to this 11th day, February 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Dries. Are there activities in the area this week that might get some of our high school students heading your way or away?
Well, glad you asked. Yeah, no, we are part of regional, state, and national types of events that happen, you know, kind of centered around this month. One was happened in January, and it was a Future Cities Competition, and it was for, it was a Great Plains Regional is what the level of it was. And Southwest Middle School from Lawrence won the event, which is no surprise to most of you guys. Smart people come out of Lawrence. Pretty well know that. Students are sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and they come from Kansas and Missouri for this Great Plains region, and they create cities on computers, build three-dimensional tabletop models to scale, and then they kind of give a brief narrative as to what's a city, how it's going to function, and why would be a better future for the world here. And they also have to present a short skit and answer some questions for judges, and kind of, and that's part of the Future Cities deal. And then we also have Math Counts, which many, many of you may have heard of, and that's for also middle school kids, and it was held this Saturday, February 9th, at K-State Polytechnic here. And 48 math elites from six schools participated, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, Susan B. Anthony of Manhattan won, but also Southeast Salina and Sacred Heart both did well in the event as well. So that was great. And also, we will be holding our, our local chapter, Smoky Valley Chapter of our Society of Professional Engineers, will be holding our awards dinner this month to recognize outstanding achievements in engineering, teaching, and citizenship. So, and also, I would like to present buttons to promote awareness of the week to the commissioners. If that'd be okay?
Please. Thank you. I think what I heard about carpenters definitely applies to engineers. You don't pay a carpenter for hammering a nail, you pay him for knowing where to put the nail. Seen that from the engineers, that's definitely the truth.
Thanks for the time.
Thank you, and I'll let you do that, then I'll...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Dries? Mr. Dries, let me give you a sign.
Official seal. Perfect.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now have Citizens Forum. It's an opportunity for anyone to come up to the podium to discuss an issue not on the agenda. Well, I guess we're all saving it up for later in the meeting. Public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time, we have none. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of February 4th, 2019. Special meeting. Item 6.2, approve the minutes of the February 4th, 2019, regular meeting. And item 6.3, approve Resolution Number 19-7669, appointing members to the Accessibility Advisory Board, Animal Control Advisory and Appeals Board, Arts and Humanities Commission, Building Advisory Board, Heritage Commission, Human Relations Commission, Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, Planning Commission, and Tree Advisory Board.
Is there any item that the commission would want removed from the consent agenda?
I don't want to, I don't want to remove 6.3. I would like to comment on 6.3. So you want me to go ahead and remove it and comment, and then we can vote on it? Or should I just comment on it?
Your comment is what I think it might be, and we haven't discussed it before. Please comment now.
I just wanted to comment on 6.3 on the boards. Went, talked to a lot, a lot of young individuals about setting on boards, and I was really very happy to see how many young people came forward and filled out forms to set on the different boards. So I was really happy to see that, and I want to, I want to thank you.
Put you on the spot to read their names out loud so their parents can hear them. Thank you.
Okay, the Accessibility Advisory Board, Sadie Van Ripper, Sacred Heart. Animal Control Advisory and Appeals Board, Alyssa Jester, Fiona Beal, Jaylee Strobe, Casey Jake, Kelsey Jake. Arts and Humanities, Sadie Smith and David Anderson. Building Advisory Board, Dwayne Grace. Heritage Commission, Amanda Bykle. Human Relations Commission, is that Malaya White and Chelsea Gavin. Parks and Recreation, Sam Stone. Planning Commission, Kate Bruhl. And Tree Advisory Board, Ally Cochran.
I don't think any of the students are here, but I don't think it's inappropriate to give them an applause. Thank you. And to the parents, make sure they get to their meetings. There's no further discussion on the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Right, the movement seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, that passes five to nothing. I'm going to take administrative prerogative and move item 7.10 ahead of the other items in administration so that we don't unnecessarily delay the evening of Your Honor. Thank you. 7.10.
Okay.
Would we move 7.2 as well to following 7.6?
Yeah, 7.2 will be removed, will be moved to after 7.6.
Item 7.10, Resolution Number 19-7673, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Smart Security Incorporated for security services at the Salina Municipal Court.
I think maybe the judge and I can tag team. If you give me a second to find 7.10 in my agenda, in my packet. There it is. So, as you may know, the, and I won't dwell too much on the Personal Family Protection Act, but as it was passed in 2013, that created a new approach in terms of people being able to carry handguns into public facilities. And so essentially, it was necessary, if you wish, to ban handguns to have a security protocol and security system in place. So in response to that, the city of Salina purchased equipment for a metal detector and worked with a security firm to staff that, that security checkpoint at Municipal Court. That contract has come up for renewal, and we've conducted a request for proposal process. The Judge Soss was very instrumental in helping facilitate along with Luanne Everhart in the Municipal Court. And so we conducted the RFP process, received three proposals from Smart Security at a rate of $18.25 an hour. Imperial Security Services, our current provider, at $25.49 an hour. And Securitas at $30.64 an hour. Each of those vendors provided references, and between myself and other staff, we followed up with local references and received positive reviews in terms of their service, their oversight, the responsiveness of management, their scheduling. And so it turns out that the low bidder also was the one that came with good recommendations, so we're prepared to recommend awarding the contract to Smart Security at an hourly rate of $18.25 an hour. That's an estimated cost of $44,000 compared to a budget allocation of $50,000. And so the options we've identified for your consideration are to approve Resolution 197673, which authorizes the city manager to execute that agreement. You could approve it with resolutions, with amendments, as you deem appropriate, and in consultation with legal counsel. You could postpone consideration to a specified date and provide any direction on additional information you'd like for consideration. And you would be within your discretion to vote to deny the resolution, which would result in the expiration of the current security contract without another security contract in place. So I don't know that we recommend that, but that is an option for your consideration. Staff recommends option number one. Judge Soss is here and is as knowledgeable or more than I am on the topic, and has been very helpful in getting us to this point. So with that, I'd be happy to open it up to questions.
Just one question. I hope I don't turn this into a discussion about something that it's not about. I noticed in the proposals, it's coming close almost to 100% difference between the low bid and the high bid. What I'm curious about when we're talking about living wages in Salina, is it known if the differences include differences in hourly wages, or are those administrative differences for the different companies?
I don't know that I know the answer to that. We focused on kind of the low bidder and the service that they provide, but we didn't do a comparison. And I expect that the 1825 wage is not just a full pass-through, there'll be some overhead in part of the security company.
The proposals, I think, from all three did include information about the actual hourly wages that they would pay the employees, and they were all in the same pay range, even though the ultimate contract price was significantly different.
Thank you. That was my only question. In that case, is there any public comment on this matter? I figured at least one, but no one. All right. Any action from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. It would be approved Resolution Number 19-7673, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Smart Security for the security services at the Municipal Court.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving Resolution Number 19-7673, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Thank you for coming. Next, we will go to item 7.3.
7.1.
I'm sorry, 7.1. We moved everything around, forgot the original first one. Sorry about that.
Item 7.1, second reading ordinance number, I think that's supposed to be a 19. Okay. 19-10993, authorizing the execution of a loan agreement with the state of Kansas for the purpose of financing the Markley Magnolia Sewer System improvements.
This would be second reading of this ordinance. First, it was passed on first reading of February 4th. Since that time, no comments have been received. Any comments, questions, concerns from the commissioners? Any comments from public? In that case, is there any requests for action?
Mayor Davis, I would move that we approve on second reading, Ordinance Number 19-10993, authorizing the execution of a loan agreement with the state of Kansas for the purpose of financing the Markley Magnolia Sewer System improvements.
Second. Right, been moved and seconded to pass Ordinance 19-10993. Any further discussion? Ready for a roll call?
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Davis?
Aye. So this passes five to nothing. Motion's approved. Now we go to 7.3. You see why you need five people up here thinking that things just happen too fast.
Item 7.3, Resolution Number 19-7670, authorizing the acceptance of the 2018 People's Choice sculpture and its placement on public property located at 211 West Iron Avenue.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The People's Choice has been involved since the earlier commission took action in 2011, budgeting in the Arts and Humanities Department an amount up to $15,000 for the purchase of the piece from Sculpture Tour each year that the public votes on. From the unveiling in early May until December 31st, ballots are cast and votes are tabulated by Visit Salina and Chamber and Sculpture Tour partners. And then our department is provided with that recommendation for purchase or that award this year. I believe in your packet is a picture of Patches. She's currently parked in front of the Smoky Hill Museum by relocation from Phillips Plaza as part of the Santa Fe streetscape. She's had two homes this year. And the, the awarding, or the voting by the public then goes to the Community Art Design Advisory Committee for review on the recommendation. And so what we're recommending is that that particular sculpture stays right where it is. The Patches is currently located on a new patio space, if you will, that the museum had installed by removing some less-than-attractive planters last fall and, or summer. And there's a nice place for that, and it's highly visible, and it's outside the primary area where Sculpture Tour shows work each year, so it complements the pieces without limiting future display space. So we're asking for your approval of including that in the public collection, and for us to be able to move forward with our visual arts coordinator, Grace Peterson, and the CAD committee to go through the other details of entering into contract with the artist, securing a bill for sale, and gathering all of the required information for signage and for it to become part of the permanent collection. So that'll stand for questions.
Also, one thing, Patches has instantly become the downtown point of reference. You just give directions from Patches and people know where to meet you.
Other than when it's raining, or the wind is blowing 40 miles an hour from the north with ice, somebody's getting their picture taken in front of Patches almost every day. It's been a very popular addition to the front of the museum, so.
This might be an opportunity to make your point about how important voting is, how close the results can be.
Yes, the report, and I can't tell you exactly what the, what the breakdown between first, second, and third was, but the third-place vote got eight votes less than the first-place vote. And second is somewhere in between there. So voting is incredibly important, and, and so we encourage folks, when the new ballots come out this May, to get on it and know that many votes, your vote matters, so.
Any questions or concerns? Thank you. Right. Any comments from the public? Any action to be taken from the commission?
Mayor Davis, I move that we approve Resolution Number 19-7670, authorizing acceptance of the 2018 People's Choice sculpture and its placement at 211 West Iron Avenue.
Second.
Thank you. Been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 19-7670. Any further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. We can now go to 7.4.
Item 7.4, Resolution Number 19-7657, approving an updated and restated community art and design policy.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This has been a number of months in the working. The Community Art Design Advisory Committee in 2018 had made some recommendations that first started with a fairly simple request of saying, you know, we've had two arts commissioners on this advisory board for quite a while, and we think one might be sufficient, and let's give the general public a chance to have a broader representation. And so we'd like to move from two at-large citizens to three on that board. Well, when we did that and then began looking at previous commission actions all the way back to 2000, when the Community Art and Design Program was originally designed and conceived, it became a little bit more involved. The department had also gone through a name change. We used to be called SAHC, and, and were, while there is a commission, like many others, it's, it's, we don't identify our departments that way. So our department, after the policy had been adopted, also began identifying themselves just as Salina Arts and Humanities and Department of the city. So that one change of broadening the, the representation by the general public took quite a bit of editorial time, and then we went through some previous resolutions, going back to 2000, when the city commission adopted a Community Art and Design Program that was in celebration of the 25th anniversary of the Smoky Hill River Festival. As part of Gold Salina, and Visioning of Salina, and other strategic plans that had taken place, there was a desire for the community to have a, to look like on the outside what it was doing so well on the inside of many buildings. And so in that desire of recognizing 25 years of River Festival, that's where the program first emerged. Over the subsequent seven years, from 2000 to 2007, there was painstaking research and work done to find... work done to find the best model possible to be able to run a public art program. That was adopted then by the city commission in 2007, and shortly after that, and just a month later, the Community Art and Design Advisory Committee was founded or established. And then in 2012, an addendum to the plan also emerged, in part because of Sculpture Tour and some of the new acquisitions of private work that was going in public spaces throughout the town. Our policy only covered mostly articulated the CIP or the capital improvement projects that you fund and approve as part of your normal work. We found an increasing number of opportunities to put art, and now it's in excess of, I believe, Commissioner Hoppick can help me, but I believe there's 32 or 34 pieces of art around the community that weren't here in 2011, and a large portion of those involve Salina Arts and Humanities, either in assisting in the administration as a resource partner or as the recipient of gifts and/or charitable donations that have been made in that public collection. So our public collection has grown substantially. So in 2012, we wrote an addendum that the city commission approved to the policy that explained work outside the CIP or the capital improvement project. Well, that's kind of how the sausage is made, and the background of our public art program. What we've done for you today is we have brought all of those different actions or previous actions and policies together into one. We took the most recent change that you made in 2012 and added it as a new section, I believe it's 14, in the new policy, so that under one document, all of the ways that our office, and I may have to defer to Grace on some of the actions of the Community Art and Design Committee that she helps administrate as the visual arts coordinator for the office. But this will allow all of those resolutions, all of the documents and the policy to be in one place and one action at one time, and then we made the, some editorial changes as well. One other change of note that we think is important to call to your attention, while the at-large citizens will increase in number, we have made a clarification, and I may ask Mr. Binkston to help me if I get this part wrong, but I believe through some either statute or attorney general finding or action, originally, the arts commissioner appointed to that board was believed to be a voting member of the board, and we've subsequently found out, because they're making recommendations to the arts commission, and the commissioners have a chance to vote and/or provide that recommendation to you as well, that we are stipulating that the appointee from the arts commission to the CAD advisory board is a non-voting member. So we've made that clarification within the board makeup. We've added or are asking for your consideration to have one more at-large citizen, and so that will bring six voting members total, three with arts and professional arts backgrounds in administration, three from at-large citizens that will be part of that advisory board. So is that correct, Mr. Binkston, on the attorney generals? Or is that a recent?
It is an attorney general's opinion that was addressing the context of the Business Improvement District Advisory Board relative to a governing body. But the concept is that, in essence, you have a duality aspect. If you have members of a board serving on the, for lack of a better term, the subservient board, and the potential for unduly influencing the results of the advisory board, where you're essentially advising yourself, it's an effort to avoid that scenario, so.
The last thing that I'd offer before having you open it up or ask questions is just a reminder of kind of the beauty of this program. There are many communities who have a percent for the arts or a mandate in their public art programs that require every CIP, every construction project, every major change that's done, whether it's to a street or a restroom or another space that has an art component. This particular program doesn't obligate you to that. Through the capital improvement project, the annual budgeting process, and insight from the advisory committees or from you as an administrative body or citizens in general, recommendations can be made, and the amount or percentage that becomes part of the capital improvement program is decided with what's in budget and timing and the application. So there are a number of projects that you've approved over the last couple of years that we haven't asked for an art component to be a part of, and so this allows a lot of freedom and flexibility and the placement of work and the selection of work and the integration with the most meaningful projects for the community. So with that, I'll stand for questions.
Any questions?
Do you want me to start off?
Yep, please.
All right. Thank you. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you. I think it makes real sense to combine all of the documents and the policies into one document. That makes a lot of sense, and hopefully that will make it easier for you as a staff and as for a governing body to refer to. Just to clarify, we use these policies and guidelines. I mean, they're in active use, correct? And they do represent, like, best practices within the, you know, the various disciplines within public art. I mean, I think you referenced that in your report, that, you know, you really made an effort to adopt best practices, and I'm really, really glad to hear that. I, one thing I did kind of have a question about, even having served on Arts and Humanities a long time ago, sometimes all the acronyms, and they still kind of bother me to this, well, not bother me, I find them very difficult to understand to this day and the different roles. So, and basically also, in terms of an organizational chart, and I'm not sure that's something that maybe we can get all the way through today, but it's something that I would maybe like to see in the future. You've got Community Art and Design Committee, which is CAD, and their role is to, their role is to actually commission the art piece, and then how does that differ from Community Art and Design Project Site Committee? And I can see Grace rolling her eyes, so you might want to come up here and, because I just, I'm not, it is, and I don't, just from my perspective, since we are taking a deep dive in reviewing this, I guess I don't understand where everybody's role fits in in terms of Community Art and Design Committee, the Community Art and Design Project Site Committee, Arts and Humanities Commission itself, the city commission, Salina Arts and Humanities staff, and, you know, your roles in each one, you know, in each one of those pieces as well.
I think I can summarize quickly on that, but then also provide you in a subsequent meeting or send through the city manager, just for your reference. We do have a flowchart for project management that highlights what each person's role is, and I will say it starts, and Grace, if you want to be close, there may be some things you want to add to or that I don't get right here. But it starts with the city commission. I mean, ideas can come from anywhere in the community, but we, the Community Art and Design Committee and/or a site committee aren't going to begin work until we have approval from the arts, or the city commission, that there is a budget and a project in place. And so that Community Art and Design Advisory Committee, as an advisory committee, they review at the same time that the rest of city staff reviews the capital improvement plan for five years. They identify potential projects and just put a note at the bottom of those items that say, this might be a project of interest. It doesn't obligate you to that, and it doesn't obligate, it doesn't require that it does become a project, but when that project comes up, there's a note that everybody's kind of got a heads up on of, hey, this ought to be a place that we consider art.
So if we do get to that point and we say, yes, this bridge or this street is a great prospect for that, and we feel like we have $50,000 to spend on this. So you've got the appropriation.
Yep.
What, where does it go from there?
What happens next is that, once that appropriation is made and the direction is provided, then Grace would work with the Community Art and Design Advisory Committee and our staff, but we would identify a project site committee. And so the CAD committee, the Community Art and Design Advisory Committee, doesn't administrate that CIP project the same way that a site committee would. A site committee is comprised of maybe the affected city department or the contracting service who's asking that. Martha has been in that position. Parks and Rec has through the Bicentennial Center or the Tony's Pizza Event Center. If it was in a public park or on a city street, engineering and public works were part of the South Ninth Street. So the site committee is made up of those affected departments who are part of the contracting for that capital improvement project. Then it's with the Community Art and Design Advisory Committee and the site committee, or at least some members of the staff, help identify who's in the neighborhood that might be appropriate to invite in, a large business owner, a small business owner, a resident, someone who, someone who has a stake in the related area. But we draw a fairly broad circle around the affected area and say, okay, who could we benefit from? And so on South Ninth, there was a small sole proprietor business and the manager of Walmart, you know? And so those kinds of things, or a representative from Walmart, but both large and small business and then at-large citizens are also included. I believe Grace, on the last couple of projects, has broadened that. We've tried to include a larger number than the minimum that's specified within the policy, but to try to be as inclusive as possible to have a broader-based public input. And so the...
That's the first, that's one of the first steps where you can involve not only the departments affected, but the neighbors. So it starts with the site committee and getting their input as to a specific, you know, what they would like to see in their neighborhood or come as a result of their project.
Well, I might have Grace take a second to talk just a little bit about how those artists are engaged in that, in that process, or how the committee is engaged in that visioning.
I don't blame you for being confused, because there are a lot of acronyms, but the site committee is just that, it's people that are stakeholders in that site, and that's kind of the beautiful part of public art, is that these are the people that were, that are kind of, they're going to help create this piece that they're going to be hosting, you know, and they have to live literally right next door to it. And so you want as many diverse people as you could possibly get on your site committee so that you have representation of everybody. We had, one of our site committees, we would have, I think we had B&amp;K, and we had a landlord, and we would have business owners, people that were, like, example for the field house, we had assurance partners, and we had Peggy Dubay from Flower Nook, and people that are going to be directly affected by this piece of art. And they come and they get together, and it's really, a really great process, and a lot of the people that are on the site committee have never been through it before. And we kind of go through things and talk about what they want to see, what's the vision, and we'll create something called the design challenge that is then given to the artist, so, which is kind of what that whole project is born from. And with the field house, for example, the site committee got together and they wanted to see the energy of what was taking place in the building expressed in the art outside. And that's where you get those kind of sound, it simulates kind of the sound waves that come off from a bouncing ball. So that's where it all gets started, and then it goes through the other two advisory committees too, so.
Okay, so then, once it, okay, so once it comes out of, like, the site committee and the call is, the call for entries is written up and submitted, and you get the calls back and then...
We have a couple of different ways that we go about doing that. So direct, we sometimes do a direct commission or a limited, yeah, depending on the timeline, and sometimes we don't know, you know, sometimes the timeline with the field house was a little quicker than these, the site committees take a long time to get to, because you do have a bunch of people that have different ideas. It takes a little while to get to where you get consensus of what you want, but, so you start with that, and then it could go to a direct commission. We had the idea of going direct commission with the field house, and we ended up not doing that with an artist that did kinetic sculpture, but the actual outside of the building changed a couple of different times, and so we had to be responsive to that. But yeah, you put out a call, and artists respond whether or not they would like to do it, and they, you know, you contact the ones that you feel like you would like to see proposals from, and then you ask them to proposal, to create a proposal for that. And that, again, is from that design challenge, those, that little, that concept that that site committee originally came up with.
So once the design is received, or, you know, designs plural, in the case of just a general call, what happens next? Does it go back to the site committee, or does it go to community art?
The site committee votes on, you know, if we have multiple artists, on which proposal that they felt best communicated the design challenge. And if they thought, I mean, there's a lot of information that artists provide. It's not just a proposal, it's pictures of their work, it's their resume, you know, all of these other things come with that. And so they take all of that information into account, not just what the drawing looks like. Is it conceivable that this is going to actually come to fruition, what this design is, given the artist's background and whatnot, and the budget too? So it goes there, and then it goes to CAD, and we talk about it, and they, both the site committee and CAD vote on it. And then it goes to the arts commission. So, and again, we have a liaison from the arts commission that's always on CAD, but I believe we also had one this time on the, on the site committee as well, so that there would always be that kind of communication, and one of those members would have an understanding of what was going on beyond staff's understanding, so.
Okay.
Yeah. So then it goes from arts commission then to, then to the city commission.
Okay, okay. That, no, that really, that really helps, because when we talk about the CAD committee, the site committee, and it just, for me anyway, it's a little bit confusing about whose role is what.
Yeah, the arts commission, it has all, it's a larger, they discuss more, CAD deals with the built environment and the placement of public art and how we educate the public about it, so.
And the whole way, staff's involved. I mean, either you or Mr. Anderson would be a member of the, you know, the site committee, the Community Art and Design Committee, and so you've got that staff guidance and that staff level of involvement. Do you personally see any issue with adding another layperson, so to speak, on that one committee versus having an arts educated person?
Yep. Well, that's a great question. I have served on site committees before myself, and I have two degrees in art. I've experienced teaching public art at the Nelson Atkins Museum for five years. I also taught in the inner city where you see a lot of the, this public art that we commissioned and goes on display. And I will tell you that the most successful projects I've ever seen were the projects that the public felt reflected them. And there, they had a part in communicating... And they had a part in communicating what it was that they wanted. And I think that, to say that a site committee or an advisory body has to have only artists or people who are educated in art is a little short-sighted, just because they're, to be an artist is self-proclaimed. And I know a lot of wonderful, wonderful artists that don't have any background in educate, you know, they're completely self-taught. But it's more than just art that's a part of this. It's our culture that we're creating that should reflect the public. And having people who aren't educated in art come to this, I mean, we don't drag them in from the streets, they're willing participants in this, and come out of it with an understanding, a deeper understanding of what it is to create art and what our public collection says about us as a city. So I know there's concern there, but one of the things that I have noticed is that a lot of people that are interested in being on the CAD committee or the Arts and Humanities are, have a vested interest in art already. They may not be educated in art or do it professionally, but it's a part of their life that they care about. So I think having an additional at-large person is a good idea, because it can get, you can get art-speaking and intimidate a lot of people on a committee that is primarily people with arts education, and they start busting out those acronyms, and everyone gets crazy.
CAD, 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 and I'm lost. Thank you, thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it. And then...
Commissioner Hodges, I might just make one clarification in terms of the question you asked about the art representation. The number of arts professionals, and I'll use a small "A" and a small "P" on that, are the same on this. So from the previous policy to the current, there's someone in administration, there's another person in design, and another one as an artist. And so we're, the committee is still represented from the professional arts field just as well. It's just broadening to an additional at-large citizen. That, in fact, could be somebody with arts experience, and that's been that way sometimes, depends on who is the mayor and how many expressions of interest there are, and the case that the applicant's made for that. So we don't make those recommendations to the commission.
We also, when we are creating a site committee, we do have arts professionals included in the stakeholders as well. So there's creative professionals represented on that level as well.
Thank you. And then to switch gears just a little bit, I just wanted to confirm, the spending authority for the city manager's office is currently set at $20,000, correct?
Correct.
Do different departments have spending limits that are lower than 20,000, or does that pretty much go across the board?
I thought you were headed the other direction. There is some authority for routine purchases and budgeted purchases in excess of 20,000, but 20,000's the typical threshold.
Because I did just have, I had a little bit of concern in terms of increasing the authorization for contracts with artists up to 20,000, just in terms of, I don't know, I feel like that's, you know, discretion that, you know, you have and that, you know, we've given you, and that's the, you know, the appropriate amount. And I'm just not sure, you know, what is the justification for moving from 15 to 20?
I believe the section that you're in may talk about this, that may be within the CIP as a minimum, not within the alternate. The only reason that a $15,000 purchase is brought here is because, I believe, when the previous city manager was here, one of his indications was if we're adding an object to a public collection, that's a slightly different thing than just buying a widget. And so because it involves occupation on a public space, it is approval of the purchase and acquisition and placement, because all of those things are the administration that Grace will have to bring to that process. So I believe that any of the other references are for the CIP or the capital improvement, the larger program. But correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, I'm not sure. I was just in the section where, and I have to salute you for your archival materials here, because we have version one, two, and three. And I'm looking at the Red Line version.
Yes.
Which is the second one.
Which page?
It's in section nine, on page 12 of the Red Line version. Section nine, item H.
Okay.
And it says, approve contracts with artists over, it was 15,000, and it increases that to $20,000.
That was simply to bring it in to alignment with the other spending authority that is granted to the other department, to match what the...
Right. That provisions within the City Commission, so what it's providing is that the City Commission would approve contracts in 20,000 or above, which is Brad saying is synchronizing that approach to any other purchasing authority in any other department. So it'd still be subject to budgeting and, you know, that approval process, but it's essentially creating the same level of authority as any other department.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? Any public comment? Please, how are you doing?
Do I state my name? Is that the drill? Carla Prickett. I live here in Salina, 914 East Republic, former employee of Salina Arts and Humanities as well. Lot of hands-on experience with this public art program and policies and projects. So I've probably, you know, touched a lot of the projects that are out there. And anyway, over the last several months, as a citizen and someone who really cares about those projects and really was involved in them, since you're talking about policy today, that's why I kind of tacked this on, otherwise, all of this and consolidation of policy sounds wonderful. But I'm concerned about maintenance. And I have driven by the overpass, and this may be something in the works and I'm just unaware, and I hope it is, but, and the water plant, those are two really fun projects and favorites of mine. But I have actually gotten out of my car and done some walking around, and the policy has provisions to cover maintenance of the purchases and the projects you all vote on and establish for the community. And I really think closer monitoring maybe, and maybe some real progressive moves to maintain what's purchased and what's built and what we own, and what's going to then be the art that says something about Salina as a community. We don't want it to be in disrepair. So those two projects in particular, I've been by quite a bit. I travel by them a lot, and I actually, like I said, got out and walked around. There's broken concrete on the pedestrian walkover. The custom fencing is now rusting and starting to need some new powder coat. And there are various things on the pieces. The other night, I think maybe three out of four of the tank pieces of the water plant were not lit completely. So, and there are scratches and rust and things there. And I know in the past, the department there has done a wonderful job of keeping things painted and looking good. But if we're going to have these projects, man, it'd be really nice to have them be at their best. And as sculpture tour, the influx of smaller sculpture happens and the purchases of those through the people's choice, those are things that are going to need some real attention and close eye to maintain them and make sure they're in top-notch shape all the time. So that's my concern, and I just wanted to bring that forward. Thank you.
Before you leave, which overpass, I may just be having a...
Ohio, North Ohio.
Because that's, okay.
Yes.
That's what I thought you might be talking about.
There are several things there. The paint's fading, some of it, like I said, the fencing paneling is rusting, and it was originally powder-coated. The concrete work is really pretty bad on, if you walk over that, just take a walk over it. And, you know, there are things about it, of course, that are still fine, but really, these things need to be kept up. And within the policy, there's designation of how, who's responsible and how that's to be handled. But I know it all, budget's always part of everything, so.
Which department's budget is responsible for that?
Go ahead.
I'll do my best at addressing that, and it's a valid point. The policy, originally and currently, calls for the custodial department to take responsibility for the work once it's there, I believe is the language that's in the policy. We haven't really done that in practice, partly because Arts and Humanities is probably in a better position to inspect and make note. About two years ago, Grace had a professional firm who volunteered their service actually come in and do a full-scale assessment on all of our small sculpture and the large capital improvement, all of the metal works that were there, and provide a fairly comprehensive report. At the time that that report came, it was after the budgeting process. And so just for 2019, you all approved a new line item for, I believe, up to, I think this year is 17,000 or something, or 20,000 in care and maintenance. And so Grace is working with the Community Art and Design Advisory Committee to establish a prioritization of those, and then an action plan for saying, these are the pieces that are going to get attention this year, next year, and so. And we may end up running into a project that requires additional budgeting approval, and then we go through the May to January process to get that done, if there's a select project or a special project that needs attention. The War Memorial at Sunset Park needs some help. Trifinity, which is actually, I think, now owned by the Building Authority, it's not, it's a shared ownership between city and county and Building Authority, but there was an assessment done on that piece as well. And so we will likely be coming back and an annual report to this body to give you an update and the recommendations that come from the advisory committee to you, so that you know what our intent is on that care and maintenance. And then we're going to do our best to anticipate each year what that budgeting amount might be and how to best approach that. The other thing I might mention, just in terms of those smaller pieces and the care and maintenance, Grace is working with the spring spruce-up and fall fix-up with a team of volunteers, both from the CAD committee and also from the community, to wash them. Just washing and removing residue and fertilizers and other things that might be on those panels or on those pieces is something that can help prolong the life of those. And so that's already taking place now to try to extend the life of the pieces that we have, so.
And I think there's one other lesson that we're learning over time, and, excuse me, I certainly don't want to put words in Grace's mouth, but I appreciated her acknowledgement of recognizing or considering getting from the concept to fabrication. And part of that discussion probably needs to be the aggressiveness and the scope of a project in terms of its fabrication and what maintenance costs it might involve at the outset, as we're considering a project and the materials to be used and the scope of the design. North Ohio Overpass is probably the most aggressive public art project that we have taken on as a community, and it carries with it ongoing maintenance responsibilities that are in proportion to the size of that project.
I do have one thing to add to what Brad said, as far as Metta Labs has recommended that we wash all the sculptures, and we do have volunteers that help with that. But we also, with CAD, in the past two months have been testing a little program that we've got that allows the citizens to help us keep an eye on our sculpture collection by way of survey. And so we send them a survey, and then every month, they just kind of go and they, we're calling it, we don't have an official name for it, it's kind of an adopt a sculpture in that they're just kind of the big brother and they're keeping, help keeping an eye on it. So if anything does happen where there's rust or a concrete breaks, then we know sooner rather than later. And in particular graffiti. So we just, this last meeting, got approval, and we've been beta-testing our little survey. And so now, we're going to be looking for citizens and businesses that are hosting or are located close to some of those pieces to help us keep an eye on them, and so that we can maintain them better and keep a better track of all of that, so.
If it's possible, I would, I'd love to get a copy of the assessment report, and as CAD develops its action plan, I'd love to remain in the loop on that as possible, because we've got, we're building a really strong collection of public art. But my fear is, it kind of, and it goes back to other departments, like the Parks Master Plan and stuff, you know, if we can't take care of what we have, then it makes me a little bit leery about adding to, you know, to maintenance burdens in the future, because I don't want to invest in something like the silver lining piece out on South Ninth, which I think is my all-time favorite piece. And, you know, if we're just, you know, watching that degrade...
Yeah, it's already showing signs of...
Then we don't deserve to own something like that. We may want to, but we, if we can't take care of it, then we shouldn't have it.
Just as those pieces speak about our culture here in Salina, not taking care of them properly also speaks of the culture.
Exactly.
And we don't want that to be reflected.
Absolutely.
And so, that's why, and we, it is difficult, because we do have so many pieces now to keep an eye on every single one of them, which is why we created this plan for people to be able to do that and help us out, but also be a part of the process and hopefully grow their appreciation of public art. But CAD has addressed the Metta Labs recommendations, and I can provide their, they did a very detailed assessment, and their, Metta Labs is a part of Zainer in Kansas City, and they're very, they are very thorough and very educated in restoration. And so that's one of the reasons why they were excited to come out and were impressed with Salina's collection, because we do have a pretty large and important collection. But yeah, we've gone through all of the projects and the assessment, and we've created our triage list, if you will. And we've got our priorities based on perhaps, you know, how valuable the sculpture is or how old or how bad it's in need of repair. The War Memorial in particular needs some help. So we do have that list, and I can provide that as well.
Thank you.
The commission ready for action on this?
Do you have a couple comments?
Is there any, well, any other public comment? Thank you.
Sorry.
All right. Back to the commission.
Mayor Ryan, or Mayor Ryan, Guy?
I'll let him do it.
I'm going to have to give you this. Sitting right next to you. Mayor Davis, I move we approve Resolution Number Eight, nineteen dash seventy-six fifty-seven, approving an updated and restated Community Art and Design Policy.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded to approve Resolution nineteen seven six five seven. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. And we are ready for seven point five.
Item seven point five, Resolution Number One Nine dash seven six seven one, authorizing the city manager to execute memorandums of agreement with Dickinson County, Ellsworth County, Harvey County, Lincoln County, McPherson County, Ottawa County, and Reno County for contingency and/or overflow support for 911 services.
Mayor Commissioners?
Through it.
This is a resolution for these agreements, a little bit of history on... the 911 upgrade in December 2017, we had two contingency plans when the 911 system failed. The first plan was to take our 911 phone lines and roll them into our police department administrative lines. The other two, the other option was, we had a handshake agreement with Dickinson County Emergency Communications that said if our 911 lines are cut, we would send our 911 calls to them. They in turn, if their lines were cut, their 911 calls would come to us. Prior to that upgrade, the 911 system was not capable of any type of overflow capabilities either. So when you could dial 911, and it just continued to ring until we were able to answer the phone call. With the upgrade in January of 2019, we were, went to a acronym for you, ESENET, Emergency Services IP Networks. And basically what that is, Emergency Services IP Network, it's a standards-based network that's designed at a high level of redundancy and resiliency to ensure that the network can continue to operate, deliver 911 calls, even if some of the circuits or endpoints are no longer functioning. So the contingency and overflow planning is very important for this ESENET to work. So the contingency, the overflow, so when we are unable to answer these phone calls, they will overflow to other agencies that we sign memorandums of agreements with. The contingency is, if we have to vacate our building, or we are unable to answer 911, these other counties would pick these phone calls up for us. And we want to do several layers on that, so you have a good continuity of operation. So the three main agencies that we would sign agreements with would be Dickinson County would be our first contingency and overflow, McPherson County would be our second choice, and Reno County would be our third choice. And the 911 coordinated council recommends that you go more than one county away for your third and final contingency plan on that. We would in turn answer phone calls for those three agencies also. The overflow, we also pick up some overflow where we would take overflow for some smaller counties. They have contingency plans to go to other places, but they don't have the overflow. So Lincoln County, Ellsworth County, Ottawa County, we would take their overflow calls in case they were unable to do this. The other nice thing about this whole ESENET routing and the new 911 system is I can leave my dispatch center and go to any other center that has this type of system. I can log in with my username and password, answer my 911 calls. So if we did go to, roll over to Dickinson County, we could certainly be making tracks to get over there so we can answer our own 911 calls. I'm asking for adoption of the Resolution of Nineteen Dash Seven Six Seven One, authorizing city manager to execute these memorandums of agreements with these counties. If you have any questions, I'll certainly help you.
Just for my own benefit, have we had times where this has actually happened, where we've had to roll to another county, or they've rolled to us?
We have not rolled to other counties in the previous times. We've always rolled them to the administrative phones. That would be a fourth and final, because now with the ESENET, once it goes outside and you roll it to administrative phones, they lose all control of it. And it's at the mercy of, back to copper wire again, and AT&amp;T coming in on our admin phones. In 2018, Dickinson County suffered that fiber cut out there. And they rolled their 911 calls to us, they rolled their administrative phone calls to us, and we continued to answer those phone calls until there was another power failure. And this was before the ESENET was in place. And when that secondary failure occurred, we lost the capability of answering 911 ourselves. So we rolled them to our administrative phones. And eventually, multiple hours later, AT&amp;T was able to get some of the redundancy back up. Salina was back on around midnight, and Dickinson County was several years, there was like 26 counties that ended up suffering from this. The ESENET is, they started in the south half of the state of Kansas, which would be, they started like McPherson County and everything south, and then went east to west, and they have the ESENET up and running. Celine County was the first one on the northern half of 2019, and they are working their way across the state now to keep this from happening again, or to reduce the likelihood of it occurring. Nothing's a given.
I just wanted to know what another acronym was. PSAP.
Public Safety Answering Point.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did try to find that one, and I kept thinking I was missing it. But if another county answers the 911 call, those dispatchers speak with the originating county's officers directly?
What we'll have is, we'll have the capability of, within each comm center and how we've set it up, we've had mutual aid frequencies out there. So we have what's called NC eight, which is north central radio frequency, it's an 800 megahertz frequency. We can manually adjust up to that, and we can talk to Dickinson County, we can talk to McPherson County. And they also have, you know, they have multiple of those groups out there. So that's how we plan on talking with them. And we'll also have the capability of email for non-emergency type calls, and we'll also have direct telephone contact. The further you get away, the harder it is to get that radio connectivity. Oh, I failed to mention, we'll also have one with Harvey County doing a contingency and overflow with them, because they wanted to be a couple counties away, and we would answer for them.
Right. Routinely, when you answer calls, are you look, you know where your offices are and screens? Can you do that with the other county that you're answering for?
Currently, we have no capability of any type of AVL vehicle locators on our vehicles or their vehicles. We just have the mapping capabilities of showing where that call is at for Celine County. And we also expanded that out, because Rural Fire District Three goes into Ellsworth County, clear over to Canaro. And we have to be able to validate that address. That way, it tells us, this is Fire District Three that needs to go to this. We do the same thing in the southeast part of the county, where Gypsum Valley, Rural Fire District One goes into Dickinson County. So we verify that address. That way, we know we have to send fire units to these places. And there's some that, we go down into McPherson County for a mile, we go up into Ottawa County for a mile. Not near as much as Ellsworth County and Dickinson County. Oh, we also have another one, CAD, computer rated dispatch for you.
So that's the third CAD today. Thanks. Like, I wasn't having trouble earlier. Thank you.
Do you happen to have the blue sheet in front of you?
Yes, sir.
On the front page, it says, under moving forward, that first paragraph, line one, two, three, four, it says, routing to administrative lines moves the call. Now, should that be out to the ESENET environment or out from?
It moves it out of, my typo.
So it is out from?
It moves it out of the ESENET.
Okay. Now I understand everything. Okay. I'm good. Any other questions, comments? Thank you. Any questions or comments from the audience, from the public? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any action from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve Resolution Number One Nine Seven Six Seven One, authorizing city manager to execute the memorandums of agreement with Dickinson, Ellsworth, Harvey, Lincoln, McPherson, Ottawa, and Reno Counties for contingency and/or overflow support for 911 services.
Second.
All right. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor of Resolution Number Nineteen Dash Seven Six Seven One, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. A little worried no one was speaking up, so, well, I want to make sure if someone's going to answer that phone, so I was going to start myself. All right, we are now at seven point six.
Item seven point six, authorize the city manager to collaborate with representatives of Celine County to pursue special legislation to create statutory for a countywide emergency communications district.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As you well know, you've sat through a couple study session presentations on the topic of emergency communication system. And it really starts with two issues. One is just the life of, we're approaching the end of the useful life of the current system, and then narrowbanding, which is mandated by the federal government and impacts the bandwidth which we can communicate with our radios and changes the need or the design for a radio communication system. So previously, consultant, TUSA consultants has been hired and provided information about system options and system design and cost estimates. And as you know, that conversation's ongoing. Hannah Stanbaugh with the emergency management is kind of leading the charge in terms of looking at options, looking at cost-saving measures, and putting together a request for proposals to solicit various proposals for competitive pricing, all with the intention that that occurs in 2019 and that we would have funding in place and be in a position to award a contract in 2020. And as I'm sure you also recall, the initial price tag for that project is $16 million. That includes not only the upfront capital investment, but ongoing operation and maintenance over an assumed 15-year life. So it at least does spread that cost out over time, but it's still pretty sizable. And it's something that benefits primarily the city and the county, but also fire districts. And so there's been ongoing conversation with the county in terms of funding options and costs. One of the things that we've talked about, actually, excuse me, one of the points that I made was, in our current property taxing structure, you've got city residents that pay both the city and a county property tax. And so we talked about trying to divide costs for the system equitably across city and county residents. The current tax structure makes that a challenge. So currently, Celine County levies a mill rate of 38.437, while the city levies a mill rate of 28.394. And so if you just assume kind of a 50-50 allocation of costs between the city and the county, then that would mean that a Celine County resident would be paying a mill rate of 38.437, while the city resident would pay that combined city and county rate, which totals 66.831 mills. And so there's a disproportionate allocation there. Had those conversations with county staff, and we looked at the current taxing structure, looked at options. Celine County's indicated a willingness to pursue special legislation in hopes of creating a special taxing district that could levy a tax at one rate across the county for this purpose. And so there's a willingness on their part to pursue special legislation. There's examples of that already in statute for different purposes, where you can form a district. And so the intention would be to kind of mirror the existing language and customize it to emergency radio communications. I think there's, and no one likes a tax, and we still have to figure out the bill and how to pay for it. But I think there are some advantages to this, excuse me, to this approach, in that it could be a dedicated tax for a dedicated purpose. So you'd have a district, and you'd have a purpose for that fund, and it would be limited to emergency communications and possibly 911. So now you also then could have jurisdiction-specific costs. The district wouldn't have to fund the entire project. It could fund kind of that common infrastructure in terms of towers and communication systems with radios and other equipment that benefit individual jurisdictions, still being the responsibility of the jurisdiction. So again, you kind of have equity in terms of city benefit and county benefit. And then there could be a dedicated board to oversee the establishment of the district and the use of the funds that would be singling in on emergency communications type issues. So that's the premise. Obviously, it would take statutory approval and at the state legislature level, but we didn't want to proceed in that fashion without having come to you first. Celine County's indicated that they're supportive of the approach, and really looking to confirm whether that's something that we want to support and work with them to pursue. With respect to our strategic plan, we, it's consistent with a couple of items. One is that Salina will be a place with a quality of life that appeals to residents and visitors, and this is a life safety item, and that the city commission will be committed to providing the highest quality services possible within available resources. And available resources is certainly a topic of conversation as relates to this project. As far as the fiscal note, this particular action doesn't carry with it any cost. We've discussed at great length kind of the overall project cost and allocation of that cost and how we're going to fund it. And that's a discussion still to be had once we refine the design and solicit competitive bids. But this would, from a timing perspective, if we're going to sync up with the bidding and finalization of cost and budgeting for 2020, we'd really need to know as part of this legislative cycle whether this is an option that gets created. So with that, I've identified four options for your consideration. You could authorize the collaboration with Celine County to pursue the special legislation. You could provide some additional direction regarding any specific concerns that you have. You could postpone consideration of this topic. The legislature is in session, so we do need to get with them and coordinate. Or you could vote not to pursue special legislation, which would have the net effect of leaving us with the current options that we have available to us. So staff recommends option one as an equitable way to approach this in cooperation with Celine County, and they're receptive as well. So just trying to create some opportunity to move this project forward as we finalize cost estimates and design. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I personally think this is an excellent idea, and only the most prudent way to spread it among all citizens of Celine County. Quick question. Do we know, has legislation like this been approved before at the state level for something like this?
There are districts that serve as a good example, where you can levy a tax, you can create a taxing district and levy a tax for a dedicated purpose. I mean, one example would be our airport authority has taxing jurisdiction, library districts do as well. So we're really just trying to find an existing example that we can customize for this purpose.
Does this have to go through both the Senate and the House?
Yes, before all is said and done.
Does it, do we know which one it goes to first?
I know that Andrew Manley, on behalf of the county, has kind of reached out to some of our reps and senators about a willingness to sponsor it. So he's already been working on kind of laying the groundwork for that.
That was my next question. If we've contacted anyone that would carry the bill forward for us.
Yes, we believe that we've got some that are willing to do that. I don't want to speak on any other elected official's behalf, but we're working in that direction.
We have had those conversations. Okay. Thank you.
Do you contemplate that this is within the expertise of the county or the city, or will you be looking to outside help with the drafting of the legislation, the promotion of it?
No, I think between staff and legal counsel, we can, and like I say, the existing examples that are out there, we can prepare a draft, and then with our elected representatives' help, they can provide us assistance too. So I think it's very feasible for us to at least put a proposal together. How it will fare in the legislature will be timed out.
Worried about the lobbying side of it.
Right.
Well, in fact, it may actually solve a problem for the state. This may give them a novel solution to use elsewhere in the state.
We're certainly not the only community or county facing it. I'm a little surprised that it hasn't come up already.
How soon are we planning on getting this put together so we can get this submitted?
I really need to defer to Andrew Manley a little bit. He's been doing more of the heavy lifting on this than I have. But with your direction, then we'll coordinate on getting the draft prepared and getting with our legislators.
Any comments from the public?
Daniel Lechoff, 2664 Highland. I guess the only question I have is, I guess, after the creation of that district, is there a tax specifically tied to that? Or is that something? a tax specifically tied to that, or is that something adjustable as you go?
Yeah, they would have taxing authority, but then they would, they could set a mill rate similar to any other taxing entity.
I did just have one question, does, by going forward with this, does this mean that any kind of efforts to collaborate with adjoining counties or with the state, are we, I mean, does this represent a decision not to pursue those options, or are we just talking about how we're going to get it paid for at this point?
Yeah, I would describe it as a funding option.
Finance, yeah, right.
And then as we finalize that design, if other parties are involved, there can be funding arrangements with them depending on what's agreed to.
All right, any action from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I move we authorize the city manager to collaborate with representatives of Salina County to pursue special legislation to create a statutory authority for a countywide emergency communications district.
Second. Been moved and seconded to authorize the city manager to collaborate with Salina County to pursue special legislation to create, probably not the right words, to create a countywide emergency communications district. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to nothing. We, you want to keep going? Anybody need a break? Good?
I could use a five-minute break.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute break and resume. We'll take a five-minute break and resume.